Good afternoon and welcome back to the Landmarks Preservation Commission's Public Hearing and Public Meeting of November fourteenth, twenty twenty-three. This meeting is being held in person in our public hearing room at One Center Street and via Zoom and livestreamed on our YouTube channel, so you can join remotely as well. We are resuming this afternoon with public hearing item number four. We are about an hour behind schedule and we do have about, I think, seven items this afternoon. So I will quickly turn it over to Corey to take us through the afternoon agenda.
All right, thanks. We'll resume with public hearing item number four, LPC twenty-three dash zero seven six four five. An application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Manhattan, block one forty-seven, lot seventy-five oh nine. One thirty-seven to one forty-one Dwayne Street, AKA sixty-two to sixty-six Thomas Street in the Tribeca South Historic District, correcting a typo in the agenda. This is a Gothic Revival slash early twentieth century commercial style store and loft building altered from a combination of three nineteenth and early twentieth century buildings by Joseph J. Furman, nineteen thirty-four to thirty-five, and the application is to legalize the removal of leaded glass transoms in storefront without LPC permits.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Michelle Shabrami of the Preservation Staff. The application before you is one forty-one Dwayne Street, which is located between Church Street and West Broadway in the Tribeca South Historic District. This application is to modify work at the storefront transoms above one storefront that was done without a permit. This shows the location of the building within the historic district. This shows overall views of the building. The photo on the left shows the building before the western section was added in the nineteen thirties, and the photo on the right is from the time of designation. This shows the storefronts at the time of designation and a zoomed-in photo of the leaded glass grid. This shows the prior street view condition of the storefront that is from two thousand fourteen. This is another photo prior to the work from two thousand twenty-two. More photos from two thousand twenty-two that show that a louver with a grid were already installed at the center portion. This shows the existing conditions that were installed without Landmarks Preservation Commission permits that the applicants are asking to be legalized with some modifications. This shows the proposed modification installing two vertical wood mullions with a black painted grid featuring five-inch squares on top of the louvers to recall the historic leaded glass transom windows. The architect Greg Wayman of Introtec Design is here if there are questions.
Thank you. And Michelle, the the, on the photo before this, where there is the example of the one louver without the grid, is that at this storefront previously?
Are you talking about this one?
Yeah.
This is the storefront.
Okay, so that has all been replaced, and they're proposing something similar, but it would expect, go across the entire top.
Correct.
Okay, Commissioners, any questions for the applicant?
Check out.
Yeah, so let's have the applicant come up. Just state your name for the record, and then you can answer any questions.
Hello, my name is Greg Wayman with Introtec Design. I'm the architect that worked on this building, and so the, the louvers there are protruding out. I think, you know, if I can come down here a little bit. Here's more of a section view that is showing the pretty much the building facade as it's being cut. The one on the left is a, is a zoomed-out portion of the section showing the entirety of the, the transom system. The one on the right is zoomed in to represent really that plane how the louvers are coming out in front of it a little bit. I think we're about an inch and a half that it's coming out. Our proposal is to put the wood mullions and that grid mesh in front of these louvers in lieu of in lieu of taking the louvers out or recessing the louvers, we would keep the louvers as they are, but then add the treatment in front of them. That's the idea.
Right, any other questions?
Grid is really just little wires.
Correct, to kind of mimic the, the wire glass that was removed.
Okay, Stephen, Commissioner Chu, and then Commissioner Ginsberg.
All right, so this detail does look like similar to what was there. Is that correct? The picture that shows the wire mesh with the louver behind it.
The difference is that it projects.
But though it would be added on top.
Added on top.
Yes.
It'll extend about an inch and a half from, from the facade. Where, as of right now, the vertical, if you can see the cursor here, these vertical wood mullions are flush with the, with facade up and bottom, but the actual wire wire grid here is, is recessed, maybe about, about a half inch there.
Commissioner Ginsberg?
So, was this filed with the Building Department and they didn't flag landmarks, or did you not file it buildings either?
They, they went through Building Department approval. This does have a permit through the building.
All right, other questions? Okay, let's see if we have any testimony. Note that there is not anyone in the room to speak on this item, so I will turn it over to Gregory Kala to see if we have any remote participants.
Thank you, Chair Carol. We have a couple of hands raised in attendance. First we'll be hearing from is John Graham from the Victorian Society of New York. John Graham, I'm promoting you to panelist right now. Seems to be an error promoting John Graham. My apologies, just having a small error on my computer.
Gregory, I'll give it a try.
Yes, Abby, if you could help me just bring John Graham to panelists, thank you so much. And if you could please unmute your line and save the record, you'll have the full to speak. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. John Graham for the Victorian Society of New York. The Victorian Society opposes, in the strongest terms possible, legalization of the destruction of the leaded glass transom panels at one thirty-seven, one forty-one Dwayne Street. This appears to be a textbook example of do what you want first, ask permission later. It must not be rewarded with a permit. The applicant should return with a revised proposal which includes restoration of the historic glass transom panels. But before a revised proposal comes back, it needs to be determined if the glass which was removed was prismatic glass. We suspect it was. This rub- ribbed glass designed to bounce sunlight back into dark interiors was a very important component of early twentieth century storefronts. Unfortunately, it's frequently been casually destroyed. It appears from the photos that some prismatic glass remains in the transoms in the Central Bay. If it does, LPC violation twenty-three oh three four three should be amended to note this, and the revised proposal should include prismatic glass in the restored transoms. Commissioners, that was the end of our submitted testimony. But as I'm very interested in the loss of prismatic glass, I made a site visit a couple of hours ago. It turns out that our suspicions are correct. There is prismatic glass, historic prismatic glass, in the transom in the Central Bay. I took a picture, which I just sent to both Bernadette Artis and Michelle Shabrami, hoping the email addresses I used are up to date. But, in any case, this reinforces our conviction that the revised proposal must include prismatic glass in the restored transoms. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you so much for your testimony. Okay, next step, we'll be hearing from Lucy Levine from the Historic District Council. Lucy Levine, I've promoted you to panelist. Please unmute your line and state your name for the record, and you'll have three minutes to speak. Thank you.
Commissioners, my name is Lucy Levine. I'm speaking on behalf of the Historic District Council. HTC finds this applicant's removal of the leaded glass transom without LPC permits to be inappropriate. We ask the Commissioners not to legalize this application. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony. I do not see any other hands raised for this item. So I will note for the record that Manhattan Community Board One recommends approval and requires a master plan be put in place to guide future storefront applications. And with that, I'll bring it back to you, Chair Carol.
Thank you, and I'd like to ask if you'd like to respond to the comments we've heard.
I, I appreciate everyone having their thoughts and opinions on the louvers that we're dealing with at this location. I will state that one of the things that we did that really brought this to fruition, I know no one really asked about it, but I'm happy to talk about it just to give it more context, is the HVAC system. Really, this is all derived from the HVAC system that was installed twenty-plus years ago. So when we were approached by Madison Reed to, to take on this project, one of the things that we do is evaluate these systems and the efficiency of these systems, and this one was really determined it was using domestic potable water as its cooling system, which wasn't appropriate. So we removed the existing HVAC system and in turn had to add a new, more modern HVAC system, which did require the louvers. And so the louvers are acting in a, in a functional element, largely, I mean, they are a hundred percent functional for the conditioning of the space. So I just wish everyone kind of take that into consideration that whether Madison Reed's there, whether they're not there, whether another tenant comes in, the proper use of these louvers are, are being utilized in, in this, in this location. So that's.
So this is connected to that system, but is that, would there have been an alternative system that maybe would have, you'd just taken one section of the transom?
So, is, obviously, New York's a little difficult with space. High commodity here, and the way the HVAC system works, without going into mass amounts of details, is that it requires a condensing unit similar, we'd probably see on the outside of your houses, as far as exhausting that heat element. Having a multi-story building, the condensing unit is actually placed inside the building on the interior on a mezzanine right behind those louvers. So if there was a space that we could have put this condenser, we probably would not have gone this route. So knowing that we were very limited is what required the louvers.
Okay, yes, Commissioner Holford Smith.
And the, the entire width of the storefront is required for the louvers? You need all that?
Correct. If you can think, think of it this way, the condensing unit that is inside there has a in and outside to it, so the inside needs fresh air, but it also needs to exhaust it. So part of these louvers, actually, half of them are doing one thing and the other half is doing something else, so, yes.
And was there, I, I mean, it doesn't really address the removal of the leaded glass, but it was there, and any option to push the louvers back so they wouldn't be projecting?
There, that was a discussion. The issue with that is it's pretty intensive undertaking, and it would probably shut down the business for probably several weeks, and that, just the reconstruction of it would be very expensive and ideally, the client doesn't want to go that route.
So, yes, Commissioner Holford Smith, followed by Commissioner Chapin.
This question for staff. So testimony says that there is prismatic glass over the Central Bay. Does the staff have any knowledge of whether the glass that was removed in this location was actually prismatic or some later addition of glass?
Yeah, Michelle's gonna answer that.
So as you can see in this photo of the condition before, maybe it's challenging for you to see, but it does seem like on, on the right and the left side of this louver, there was some prismatic glass.
Commissioner Chapin?
I was just gonna ask for clarification. The prismatic glass was recently removed when they put in the air conditioning, not years ago. Okay.
Yeah, this, I think, is a pre-existing photo. Commissioner Ginsberg?
Is any of the glass that's been removed existing, do you have it, or did you just throw it out?
It's, it's, do not believe it's available.
Thank you.
It's trash.
All right, did you have another question? Okay, any other questions?
Well, was there ever an investigation to try to use that slot right underneath? As opposed to where the glass is above?
Be your friend of this.
There's a horizontal recess across the whole.
No. I, I think there was just a massing of material in there. I think that would have been really difficult to puncture and, and opening through there. I say that now looking at it, but it was not a previous discussion, no.
Would, just understanding the need for the intake and the exhaust, would that, do you think that that the dimension of that recess would have accommodated those required, the required in, intake and exhaust?
Yeah, unfortunately with these louvers as well is, is there's a free area calculation part of them, so even though you see it and there's a obviously, once all the transoms are removed, you have a big opening, the louvers, the calculation of a free area of only about forty-five, fifty percent. So even though they look very large, the air that's actually coming in is only forty-five to fifty percent of the entire area, so it is kind of unfortunate, and they're also kind of squatty than we would typically like, again, to kind of meet that existing condition. And so they have been designed, calculated to be the size they are.
Yes, Vice Chair Bland.
One more question. I guess the proper way to have done this would be to come to us. You'd present us with this and, and your solution, and we would have asked the question, what other options are there? And I think you've already told us there aren't any. So our response would have been to say, either keep the glass and don't have air conditioning? Or what? Modify what, though?
Well, I think.
I mean, what could we have done?
Yeah, we could have saved the glass.
That's sort of where I'm getting to. I mean, it's, it's an unfortunate situation, but so is a commercial space with no ability to condition the air. Anyway, I'm just trying to.
Right, because I think we have to think about it as it's coming to us, what we have done, and I think we're contented with a situation where there's a certain required air conditioning that needs to be accommodated and not a lot of places you can do that of any other. Any other final questions?
Second.
Oh, favorite, say hi. Hi. Any opposed? All right, the hearing is closed and we begin our discussion on this. You know, not going to be the most interesting conversation. Commissioner Holford Smith, would you like to?
Well, thank you, Fred. Um, just like you said, if, you know, we had come to us with this application, there's not much you can do. And perhaps you could have asked that no, that probably wouldn't have worked. Another, another sort of transom be added at the storefront, but that probably would have been very intrusive on the interior. You know, having done these kinds of things myself, it's hard to get fresh air in a storefront, so you know, I think you probably would have been reluctant to have, you know, approved it going in, so I don't see much of a clear path of another solution here unless someone else has any other options, so.
Continue to work with the staff on the details.
Yeah, I think I did look at the relationship to the existing prismatic glass. It does look like that has a slight projection. I mean, it could be the black paint, but instead of having the frame just sort of tacked on, and then having another recess under the cornice and above the, the header of the storefront, maybe they could have a, just have a panel that goes sort of like, you know, spans the whole distance, so it looks more intentional.
All right, Commissioner Chapin? Yeah.
I, I agree. This is a difficult, unfortunate situation. And it's also true that, you know, we we ask people to obviously not act without talking about Landmarks Commission, and I were trying to avoid, prevent that as much as we can. At the same time, we also have to look at what we would have permitted or not permitted if they did come to us, and it appears that they, there really wouldn't have been an option here that could have been pursued. So I would say I could reluctantly approve this because there isn't, we don't have much other course of action that we could take in this case.
Okay, Commissioner Goldblum?
Boy, these, these kind of situations really do suck. I don't know, I think that while I can't say that it was, you know, unacceptable to put air conditioning into the space, of course, I think that there are solutions that could, could be looked at if this was being done from scratch. I mean, including varying the size of the blades, maybe go with a smaller blade that has more, you know, that has the same fifty percent air that looks a little bit nicer, looks a little bit less obtrusive. These, these blades have the dubious distinction of being very chunky, and, you know, you can get fifty percent openable area in lots of different ways, maybe a perforated material, I don't know. There's lots of ways to look at it, is all I'm saying, and I think that this kind of thing could, could, you know, could be handled at a staff level to kind of sort it all out, but I wouldn't throw my hands up and give up. I, I also would say that the, the only way to really judge this, whether it's for staff or for us, is to, to a mock-up and take a picture of it, because frankly, seeing a section of a, of a wire is not really, I mean, I don't know how that's gonna look. I think it might look like chicken wire on a cage or something. I don't think it's gonna have the quality of resemblance to the, you know, it's the leaded glass transoms that it, it purports to have, you know. Yeah, I, I, it's not, it's not enough, I don't think. I think that they would, for me anyway, I would ask them to do a mock-up and then take a look at it.
Okay, Commissioner Ginsberg?
Well, first, and so dare we drop the ball, and I don't know if we can say anything to them square. Okay. The first comment I had is with the current black or very dark ones, louvers, if you put a grid in front of it, the grid's gonna basically not read. So first, you need to paint the louvers white, which has another issue. They're gonna need to get cleaned on a regular basis, or they're gonna look bad, but the only way this might work at all, maybe a light gray instead of white, is something where the louvers are a light color to the grid back, and I tend to agree with Commissioner Goldblum, it would be good to see a mock-up. This quite possibly is the only solution, but it is very painful after the fact to come with a solution that isn't very good.
Vice Chair Blair?
Yeah. This is not why I agreed to put on this commission. Right, and comes with the territory. You know, I, I think it's been said, maybe, maybe seeing a mock-up would, would help staff evaluate whether this is gonna work or not. I kind of leave it at that. I'm not, I'm not, not really sure what I think.
I'm gonna defer to Michael and Mark and Fred on this, a mock-up sounds like a good idea. Commissioner Chu?
Yeah, I have to agree with my fellow commissioners on that. It's very hard to judge. I, I, I think the detail shown would not produce the desired effect in any way. I would explore trying to push the louvers back and create a cavity, and then maybe you've got a shot about doing something out in front. Maybe it's not chicken wire, maybe it's got a slight depth to it so that it isn't chicken wire, so that, that, because at the end of the day, the only effect we're gonna get is the grid. That's, that's what we're asking for, just a semblance of the grid at the right scale. And we're not gonna get it with the chicken wire. No.
Okay, Commissioner Master?
I defer to the other commissioners and I agree with the comments that's, that have been said.
Okay, Commissioner Jefferson?
I think a mock-up is a reasonable way to go.
Okay, so how about this? I mean, I think we recognize that they have to have air conditioning. And so would everybody be comfortable with us doing an approval for a louver with a grid in front of it, subject to the staff evaluating a mock-up and working with them on the color and details of the framing and the grid?
Yes.
And the louver, the color of the louvers and the frame, detailing of the framing.
If you promise we don't have to ever see it again.
The promise. Okay, Commissioner Holford Smith, would you make that motion?
In the matter of LPC twenty-three zero seven six four five, one thirty-seven dash one forty-one Dwayne Street, AKA sixty-two sixty-six Thomas Street, Tribeca East District. A Gothic Revival, early twentieth century, commercial style store and loft building altered from a combination of three nineteenth and early twentieth century buildings by Joseph J. Furman in nineteen thirty-four, thirty-five. Application is to legalize the removal of leaded glass transoms without Landmarks Preservation Commission permits. I note that the building's style, scale, materials, and details are among the, are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the Tribeca East Historic District. I recommend approval with modifications, working with staff, finding that the transom assembly at this storefront was altered, with all or most of the glass, of the glazing removed prior to the designation of the historic district. That the transoms at the neighboring storefronts have been altered, eliminated, or concealed. Therefore, the proposed work will not detract from the unified composition of elements. That the historic leaded glass at the transom was not unique or firmly crafted. That the proposed tripartite wood framing and metal grids will help the installation to recall the articulation, details, and character of the historic transoms. When you leave off the part of the black paint, so however, I find that the details for the transom modifications are not fully developed. Therefore, I recommend that the applicant work with the commission staff to prepare a mock-up that shows the integration of the louver and the wire, proposed wire mesh in the front, looking at possibly recessing the louvers, painting the, contrasting color to give more depth and definition to the the whole installation.
And, and the detailing of the frame and the wire. Okay, Commissioner Chapin, would you second that motion?
Second.
All right, Mark.
Chair Carol?
Aye.
Commissioner Bland?
Aye.
Commissioner Chapin?
Aye.
Commissioner Chu?
Aye.
Commissioner Ginsberg? Commissioner Goldblum?
Aye.
Commissioner Jefferson?
Aye.
Commissioner Lutfi?
Aye.
Commissioner Master?
Aye.
Commissioner Holford Smith?
Aye.
With ten in favor and none opposed, the motion passes.
All right, so please continue to work with the staff on the color and the detailing and the mock-up. All right, we'll move to the next item now.
Okay, we're actually gonna do a minor schedule change and jump to public hearing item number six. LPC twenty-four dash zero one five six three. This is an application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Manhattan, block five ninety, lot sixty-three, seventeen Barrow Street in the Greenwich Village Historic District. This is a late federal-style rowhouse built in eighteen thirty-four. The application is to install the stoop gate and legalize alterations to the stoop in replacement of entrance infill without LPC permits.
Good afternoon. I'm Colleen Gujon. I am the owner of Seventeen Barrow Street. And I will present to you, and this is my first time doing this in public, so bear with me a moment. Um, can you just, oh, I just did the arrow. Okay, here is the house. It's at Seventeen Barrow Street. It is located between Leaker, West Forest Street, and very close to Seventh Avenue. And the map here, you can see. And this is the stoop that we're working on. That is my granddaughter that I'm trying to protect from. We're having a lot of issues, as you know, with stoops and people wanting to live on your stoop and do all kinds of things. So I don't need to tell you all about those things, but they're not good. So I am, I'm here to ask you to help me with this. And here we have some historic photos from the forties and the sixties. And you can see the stoop by the car on the left side there. And then on the right, you can see the stoop close to the arch. And again, the forties and the sixties. You can see the railing is a very basic, non-decorative railing, and it is also Um, you can see the railing is a very basic, non-decorative railing and it is also, uh, it's a cement stoop. Again, similar photos, 40s and 60s. This is 1983. And you start to see that the staircase, um, in the right photo, you can see the stair is starting to deteriorate considerably because it's made out of cement. And the cement is just cracking and getting worse and worse. Okay, 2009, this is, the door is rotting at the bottom and the cement is just wearing deeper and deeper down and it's becoming dangerous. Okay, here we are. Let me see, I have to read to you from my, I'm used to reading to my granddaughter, so I will pretend I'm reading to you. But, uh, we have here stairs and doors, or da, 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 here you see. Here's my current stoop and the door, which I feel complements the simplicity of our building. Um, the stair, the stoops and the stairs I had done myself. Uh, we are in a commercial district and, um, there's no row houses near us. So there's only one stoop that I'm aware of on my whole block, which is mine. Uh, to the left, we have a restaurant. To the right, we have a very wild, loud bar, that's a, a sports bar. And across the street is a parking garage. So it is a lovely place to sit and hang out and wait and drink, smoke and do whatever other things you consider. Um, I'm proposing an extremely simple gate, which matches exactly the simplicity of the present day railing. Um, sorry, this is a very simple photo, but again, the gate is very simple. And, um, it will not obstruct. It, it wouldn't obstruct the sidewalk at all and it would just be simply there just to do our best to keep things safe for the residents in the neighborhood. Um, the ironwork company that I'm looking to hire is Petrillo Iron Works. They were recently approved. Uh, they are located at 133 West Forest Street. And it's very similar, but ours is way more non-decorative. I mean, ours is just super basic. This one has a little more decorative elements to it. Now I skipped a bit of what I wanted to talk to you about here. When I came to landmarks, uh, to get the, the stoop approved, it was brought to my attention by the landmark staff that there had been changes made without LPC approval. Therefore, I would like to ask you to legalize the changes made on the stoop, the door and the transom. Sorry, I skipped that part. Should I go back a bit to my, what it looks like?
That's mine.
Okay. Um, and then again, these are gates that have been approved locally in the West Village where I am, 17 Grove Street. I can't, I honestly, I can't read, uh, they're, they're all very close to where I'm located. And that is my case in a nutshell.
Okay. Commissioners, do we have any questions? Yes, Commissioner Chapin?
Yeah, could the staff just clarify, um, when these changes to the stoop and so forth were made? And what was there before?
So I think even going back to the 1940s, there looked in the tax photo like there was a, an altered condition.
Right.
And that, um, over the years, it has been, the stoop and the door have been replaced and altered over time. I think the applicant recently rebuilt the stoop, which had, which was a concrete stoop that had deteriorated. And, um, so we have to approve legalizing the stoop.
Right.
And then the door as well.
Yeah, I was looking at the earlier photos and it looked very similar. So I was trying to figure out what was there originally and whether, what kind of a stoop do we think was there? Or, I mean, was it more elaborate maybe?
Uh, I'm under new preservation staff. Um, so I think it was around 2009 that, um, what was probably a brownstone clad masonry stoop was kind of covered up. There's a, a lot of different small changes that seem to happen over time, um, since the 40s from the early photo we have. Um, but up until 2009, 2011, I think brownstone was present. It was just kind of coated. Um, and maybe it's like the whole thing had been extended a bit to the edge of, um, the storefront right there. So it's sort of a mixture of changes over time.
And the door and railing issues?
Um, the, uh, the railing was there at the time of designation, the simple iron railing. Um, the door and transom were, um, approved in 1983 in conjunction with the MOU that was established for this building. So there is a permit for those, but then things have changed since then. There were these two columns in the 1983 photo that have since been removed. Otherwise, uh, and it's been painted brown, but, um, yeah, does that answer your question?
Yeah, just, just to, uh, clarify a little bit there. So it, it's unusual what you see there with the door set back so far behind the transom. But that transom was carried by what we believe were two colonettes. And so it wouldn't have looked as odd as it does now. Those were removed. Um, so that's the remainder of what was approved back at the time, but there's been elements, those two elements were taken away from it. So now it looks the way it does because it's missing that.
Well, the door was reset for.
But that, that is how it was in that prior approval. It just had colonettes to the jam side on either side of the door.
Wasn't the door with the transom on the same plane now?
Not.
Uh, well, no, Corey's referring to our, our prior approval. So I think we don't know what it was originally. Uh, one could assume that there was, uh, it was in, in alignment. But we did approve the two different planes, but the transom was supported by columns, which have since been removed. Colonettes, yeah. I'm not sure if, if it was removed by the current applicant or in previous year.
The columns?
Yeah.
Um, we did not remove the columns. Yeah, I think they've been gone for a while, but I don't know.
Was, was the railing pre-existing?
Yes.
Yes.
At time of designation, yeah.
And then, and then the steps like on the side, the way that they had previously been extended. So these, you can see in the photos that were presented to us that this has had incremental changes over time. And the widening of them happened at some point in the past. Mm-hmm. Yes, Commissioner Ginsburg?
So when the stones were were you the owner?
Uh, sorry. I reached, I did the repairs around 2015, 16. Um, unbeknownst to me, I just thought these are dilapidated and dangerous. I'm going to fix them. And that is what I did. Um, aesthetically, I just thought they looked really nice and they fit in with the.
Fix them, repair them in time. You decided and changed the look because I, I understand.
Changed the look so much. I mean, they were cement and I upgraded them in my, in my humble opinion.
You changed the material, but not the configuration.
Correct. Correct. It was cement and literally it was just concave.
And so what is the material of the cladding the steps?
I believe it's, what did we decide? That was like a black stone?
I think a blue, a light blue stone.
A light blue stone.
Light blue stone.
All right. And then the unfinished side is concrete.
Correct. And then the, well, on the left side is where the bar is located and they have their garbage receptacle there. So you don't even notice, oh, it's a left. The right, there are generally always plants there. So it's, you know, it aesthetically, it's pretty. I mean, Mike?
Was this filed, this was the Google part?
Um, no. So I'm asking your, if you would legalize what I've done.
It may not have.
Might be a repair.
If it was a repair, it might not require.
I, I mean, it was really in a, in a dangerous dilapidation. Yeah.
This is a question for staff, I think. Can we require that the two columns that were under the transom be put back in?
Yes.
Thank you.
Commissioner Lutface?
Jen, so we,
you know, you showed us some gates and where are they?
Oh, it, it's just a very simple image and I apologize for that.
Uh, I'd like to have an idea of what's going on on the street.
Simple. Um, let me just see if I can find that gate image. No, not here. Ah, voila. Uh, tiny, and I apologize for that. Um, Petrillo Iron Works. My gentleman has been unwell and his mother is passing away or something and he's, he's like, I'm going to get to it and but we're, we're, we signed a contract and he's gotten half my money, so.
I think, but the question is where were the other gates? And those other gates were commissioned.
The other gates.
They're nearby streets. They're not, so this is, I understand it is the only stoop on this street. It's otherwise a commercial and garage and other uses. So we have approved stoop gates in other, on other streets where the stoop is the anomaly. It's not part of a row of stoops and there are commercial and other typologies around it. This one, Commissioner Ginsburg?
So I have a question.
Sure.
It sounds like you've been going ahead with the contract on the gates without reviewing with us. Uh, cause you said you've given them a deposit and said, uh, is this, I, I, you know, I, I'm just trying to understand. There seem to be these incremental changes that keep happening without any review.
I can tell you this. I have learned a lot about the protocol. I will never, ever skip the protocol ever again. I can assure you.
But I think, to be fair, I think these incremental changes happened prior to this owner. And then this owner made changes to the stoop that she thought was a repair. She did come to us to do the stoop gate. So you didn't know you had to come to us for the stoop gate. It's just that, that you thought you were doing a repair that didn't need a permit. You've now learned your lesson. But I think we have to focus on the work, um, and maybe it's, except for sort of context in terms of how much historic fabric has been there over the last decades. I'm not sure it's worth focusing on who did it and when. Okay. Any other questions? All right, let's, yes, Commissioner Jefferson? This, uh, this is the historic context of the changes have happened over time. The stoop was widened at some point in the past. Um, but was this width at the time of designation? And in fact, the railings are the same railings that were there at the time of designation. She added the bluestone as part of a repair. Yeah. Okay. So let's move to public testimony and I'll note that there is nobody in the room to testify in person. So I will turn it over to Gregory to take us through any remote participants.
Thank you, Chair Cal. We received a few hands raised in the attendees list, so I'll be going through them now. The first hand raised is Chloe Gregoire. So Chloe Gregoire, I will be promoting you to panelist right now. Please unmute your line and state your name for the record. You will have three minutes to speak. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Chloe Gregoire and I'm speaking on behalf of Village Preservation. Thank you for the opportunity to testify. Village Preservation is concerned about the unclear proposal to legalize alterations to the stoop and replacement of entrance infill without Landmarks Preservation Commission permits. As the proposed scope was not shown in the presentation deck that was published for public review. If the existing entrance door and transom were installed without permits and the intent is to legalize their installation, we have concerns about the proposal. Historically and at the time of designation, the transom was co-founder with the door. A wood panel door, transom and door surround that all recall the historic details would be more appropriate here. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony. Next up, we will be hearing from Lucy Levine from the Historic District Council. Lucy Levine, I promoted you to panelist. So please unmute your line and state your name for the record. You will have three minutes to speak. Thank you.
Hi Commissioners, my name is Lucy Levine. I'm speaking on behalf of the Historic District Council. HTC finds this altered door and infringement to be inappropriate. The stoop is also inappropriate and we believe it should be rebuilt using blocks of bluestone. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony. Next up, we'll be hearing from John Graham from the Victorian Society of New York. John Graham, I have promoted you to panelist. Please unmute your line and state your name for the record. You will have three minutes to speak. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. John Graham from the Victorian Society. I will point out before I start our testimony that there are images in the presentation from 1983, which show the colonettes and from 2009. This application is in response to the third violation the owner has received for not following the rules. In 2015, a violation was issued for failure to file the cyclical inspection reports required by the 1979 approval of a zoning modification of use in bulk. And in 2016, a violation was issued for fully altering the storefront without permits. The storefront violation was eventually resolved with the issuance of the CVA in 2017. Now the owner wants to legalize completely inappropriate work at the residential entrance. The removal of the historic stoop, wood entrance door, transom and framing is inappropriate, is inappropriate. The removed stoop and doorway may date to 1896, when the house's ground floor would have been remodeled to accommodate the adjacent building number 15, which caused the demolition of the left hand of this double house. The replacement of the doorway infill with the transom pushed forward from the plane of the door and a new door that appears to be plastic or fiberglass with fake wood grain is inappropriate. And the removal of the solid stone stair at the stoop and its replacement with stair treads and risers covered with thin stone veneer is also inappropriate, inappropriate. I'll repeat that the photos from 1983 and 2009 give views of the historic stone stoop. We note finally that the granting of a modification of use and bulk under zoning law section 74711 requires the recipient property to maintain in first class condition and historic features of the building to be protected. The zoning language is clear stating that a program, program has been established for continuing maintenance that will result in the preservation of the subject building. It also states the commission may prescribe appropriate additional conditions and safeguards which will enhance the character of the building. We suggest that even if the commission were inclined to approve the completed work in other circumstances, here the work must be held to a higher standard. Concerning the proposed stoop gate, which we typically are opposed to, while we are typically opposed to these gates, the commercial nature of this street leads us to find that the installation of the stoop gate itself would not be inappropriate in this location. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you so much for your testimony. I am looking through the attendees list now and I do not see any further hands raised. So I will note for the record that Manhattan Community Board Two recommends denial of the gate as presented and recommends that the applicant return with the design that is more sensitive and inspired by the late federal style property. And with that, I'll bring you back to you, Chair Cal.
Okay. So I'd like to ask you if you'd like to respond to any of the comments we heard.
The, the door is a solid wood door. It's a good quality door. Wasn't cheap, so I can assure you of that. And as far as the transom goes, I feel like the transom actually fits the quirkiness. It's a very quirky and unusual building. I feel it's, it just really harmonizes and looks nice. That's my, my, my thoughts. I am willing maybe to put a wood panel on the side left if that would perhaps, you know, make everyone more comfortable with this. And I'm just hoping to work with you and make this the best possible arrangement between us both. And I appreciate everything you've had to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Commissioners, any final questions? Commissioner Ginsburg?
All right. Can the staff address it all with 74711? Issue that was raised, what, what instigated that? And what responsibilities of the building owner that implies?
Um, what I can say is that there was, there was a special permit, um, that was issued and I'm not, it's not unclear from here what exactly it was for, but the continuing, every special permit requires a continuing maintenance plan. And that requires the building be brought back to a certain level of repair and be maintained at that level. And then in addition, there's cyclical maintenance requirements to make sure the buildings, you know, structurally and, and mechanical systems and stuff like that are retained. So, um, it's a higher level, the obligation is to, is to. So, um, it's a higher level, the obligation is to, is to keep the building at a, at a higher level of, um, of appearance.
And so I think that, um, they are behind on their cyclical maintenance plan and that I think John Weiss has been working with the owner to ensure that that's up to date. Okay. Any other questions? Okay, let's move to close the hearing and have our discussion. Vice Chair Bland, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
So.
Commissioner Lutfee, would you second that motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? All right, the hearing is closed and we have really three components before us. One is to legalize modifications to a previously approved door and transom, which included removing colonnets that came down under the projecting transom. The second component is to legalize the refinishing of the stoop with the bluestone on the risers and treads and then the concrete on the side facade, side planes of stoop. And the third component is to, uh, is seeking a approval for a gate at the bottom of the stoop, which is something that the commission has approved in instances where the stoop is not a traditional high stoop and it's the building, the stoop is the anomaly on the block. If the block stoop is not within a row of houses with stoops and in a context similar to this with commercial buildings and utilitarian buildings or other typologies. So, um, we've got the three components to discuss and we'll begin our discussion now. Commissioner Chapin, would you start this one?
Uh, I, I don't find the placing of a gate unreasonable in the circumstances because it's in a commercial area basically between the restaurant, which I believe they owned and the, uh, adjacent, uh, you know, sort of bar, which is obviously attracting a lot of clientele and then other, other establishments. So I think that's fine. And I'm not, I'm, I'm not, because I think nobody is actually sure what was there to begin with as far as the steps are concerned. I mean, they've been changed a lot over time, repaired over time. Um, and you know, their staff said they thought it was brownstone, maybe originally and so forth, but we, we really don't know what the, you know, condition was. So if we were to embark on them doing something here, we'd have to, you know, have a plan for a real renovation. And I don't know what entirely would be.
But bluestone is also a typical material.
Yeah, and the fact that bluestone was used, it's a nice material, you know, so I'm, I'm okay. I think I'm okay with that repair that was done. Um, it would be desirable probably to have those columns replaced. Um, and they're, they're, you know, you're engaged in a monitoring program with them at the moment. So perhaps that could be included in, at some point in this monitoring programs that go forward. Um, I think that's really all of the issues, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. Commissioner Goldblum?
Thanks. I gotta say, I love the audacity of somebody just sawing through a building, you know, and just leaving two out of the three panes on the top floor. I think that's just really neat, but you know, not that one could do such a thing nowadays, but, uh, you know, and God knows how they, how they actually did it, you know? They just like sheared off the bearing all of that building and just like kind of, well, you know, it's just, uh, it's really great, but, um, uh, in terms of this, the thing that makes this hard for me is the 74711. 74711 is granted under this, you know, very Byzantine process, very difficult in order to grant a special loophole for the property. And in trade for the loophole, the, the building owner is supposed to maintain it not to a level that would be considered normally appropriate, but to a higher level of craft and care. And so, um, you know, whereas I, I think that many of the things that we're talking about would be totally no brainers in a normal situation. I think here it kind of bears a little bit more care and scrutiny. So from that point of view, I, I think that the gate is fine. Like Diana said, I have no problem with the gate. Although I think the density of the gate with the pickets might look peculiar without any, any pickets on the side. So she, they might consider either adding pickets on the side or making the gates maybe just like a diagonal or an X or something instead of, instead of the pickets. It'll just look a little less awkward and kind of post factor. I think that the railings were clearly not original to the house. So there's no need to really delve into the detailing.
Those were pre-existing.
Right, right. So I don't think we need to look to upgrade or modify them or the gate to match them. I think that the door, um, I agree with Diana, put the column, colonnets back so that the transom looks normal. Um, I would also ask the staff to look at the door itself. If the door design is consistent with their interpretation of the, you know, uh, the style. It kind of looks a little bit store bought to me, uh, as, as a generic design, but.
I think it's the door that we approved at the time.
So then, then it's good to go. Um, I, and I think that the only then issue would be the steps. And I mean, I think the steps at the time of designation were un, un, uninteresting and probably not original. But I think you're right, that the steps were probably originally a, a block of brownstone set upon another block of brownstone. And there's some evidence of that in the photographs. So I think that the, the least difficult way to achieve some semblance of that is to ask them to add a piece of, add, add bluestone to the sides that would at least repair that detail. It wouldn't require too much cost and it would kind of get us halfway to some.
Make the whole thing look like.
You know, like you said, block, block, block infill. Um, yeah, that's it. And just the color of the door should be looked at with staff too.
Commissioner Ginsberg?
Okay, uh, in general, I agree with the comments, game's good. I think simplifying it probably makes sense. Uh, the, I think adding the colonnets is really important. And I'm somewhat torn about the steps. Uh, in that if they'd come in without it, I would have said just repair the concrete probably. But they've done this and I think what Commissioner Goldblum suggests makes some sense. So I can support that. And I think this could all be resolved with staff.
Okay, thank you. Vice Chair Bland?
Um, yeah, I think the, uh, the stoop gate is acceptable in this condition on this block. It's not part of a row. Um, I think what's been done already on this, on the stoop in terms of the bluestone is okay. Uh, adding a, 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 a side piece of that would make it better, I suppose. Same material. Um, and I'm a little unclear. I, I didn't think we could force this applicant to.
They removed the colonnets or somebody removed the colonnets at some point.
But she said she didn't.
No.
So a previous owner. So we can leave.
I can make them.
Make some.
All right, then I guess they should come back. I mean, to.
I mean, it is important that the time to own a carrot.
Yeah. Yeah, they did. Uh, and I won't, um, I'll, I'll wait for Jeannie to, uh, to, she's done a little homework here. Who lived in this house once upon a time?
You know, it could, it could, it could be wrong.
Somebody's famous.
I Googled something and I Googled the address and it, it might be. It said that. Said that Aaron Burley. But I'm not the same company, it came from Google, sir. So.
You get what you pay for.
Yeah, just by this, are those people comfortable with the idea of returning the colonnets? So it's returned to the approved condition, treating the sides with bluestone to match the risers. As Mr. Gold suggested and approving the gate. Okay, so let's say, why don't we go ahead and make that.
Excellent.
Yeah.
Not just the front, it's the side.
No, the gate is going to scope between one railing and the other railing.
Michael had talked about pickets.
We can ask, uh, you want to go back to. So they, uh, it's just the gate is not. So those are, those are pre-existing. So I think we can ask them to study the design of the gate and its relationship to the railings. Okay, so Diana, it'll be, uh, returning the colonnets, bluestone on the side to match the risers and treads. Returning the colonnets and then the stoop gate design should relate to the railings.
Yeah. Sarah, I just want to add to that because if security is a concern, you know, just putting a gate in the front doesn't do anything. Someone can just climb right up onto your.
That's always the issue.
That's always the issue.
It's a.
Yeah, but I'm in agreement with exploring the sides and that's why.
Maybe lighting or something, yeah. Okay, uh, in the matter of a certificate of appropriateness, borough of Manhattan, LPC 24-01-563-17 Bear Street, Greenwich Village Historic District. Now, late federal style rowhouse built in 1834. Application is to install a stoop gate and legalize alterations to the stoop and replacement of entrance infill without Landmarks Preservation Commission permits. And I note that the building's style, scale, materials and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the Greenwich Village Historic District. I recommend approval with modifications, finding that the installation of the proposed gate will not damage or eliminate any significant architectural features, that the stoop is located within a commercial area and not part of a row of buildings with stoops, that the gate will be simply designed and harmonious with the building and existing railings in terms of dimensions, material and finish, and that the materials, design, details and finish of the door and transom are in keeping with the age and style of the building. However, I find that the unfinished treatment at the sides of the door, the sides of the stoop and the masonry adjoining the stoop are not well resolved and detract from the building. And that the original scope of work for the entrance and stoop was approved in conjunction with a modification of use permit, which stipulates that the work will be restorative in nature and return the building closer to its original appearance, a standard which the current proposal does not fully meet. Therefore, I recommend the stoop be resurfaced, uh, on the sides with bluestone. Uh, and, um, closely recall this during ministry in terms of profiles, details and profiles and details. And that the colonnets, uh, be replaced, uh, and that the, uh, stoop gate, uh, relate, uh, to the, uh, to the, uh, in design and proportions to the railings, working with the staff.
All right, Commissioner, second that motion?
Second.
Chair Carol?
Aye.
Commissioner Bland?
Aye.
Mr. Chapin?
Aye.
Mr. Chu?
Aye.
Mr. Ginsberg?
Aye.
Mr. Goldblum?
Aye.
Commissioner Jefferson?
Aye.
Mr. Lutfee?
Aye.
Commissioner Master?
Aye.
Alfred Smith?
Aye.
With ten in favor and unopposed, the motion passes.
All right, so that's approved with modifications. You can continue to work with Emma and Bernadette.
Thank you very much. I'm very grateful for your time.
Thank you. All right, we'll move to the next item.
The next item is public hearing item number seven, LPC 24-03323. An application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Manhattan, block 818, lot 56, 10 West 17th Street in Ladies Mile Historic District. Uh, this is a currently a vacant lot, formerly a mid 20th century commercial building, uh, designed by Balfoto and Pavarini and built in 1961 to 63. The application is to construct a new building.
You guys mind if we put some stuff up here? So this is a little large, so we'll keep this on here. This, this. Okay. It has a.
This is like the old Davis with all the samples. Should I go ahead? Uh, good afternoon, Commissioners. Erin Rulli Higgins Quasbarthen Partners. I'm joined today by Jordan Rogo of DXA Studio. And we're here to share with you, um, a proposal for a new residential building at, at 10 uh, West 17th Street in the Ladies Mile District. Uh, I'm going to take you through some of the, uh, history and context. And, uh, Jordan's going to share with you, uh, the details of the design and some of their thinking in terms of design process. Uh, this is a project being developed by Anbal. Um, some of you may remember this project. This is their most recent project they completed in Ladies Mile District. Uh, new building designed by Cook Fox at 39 to 41, uh, West 23rd Street. It was a 74711 that included the restoration of, uh, the adjacent loft building. So you can see that the transformation there of, uh, uh, recent 74711 completed project. But I think that this really, uh, represents the, the, um, the ethos of, of Anbal and the, the careful consideration that they give to the new buildings that they construct and what a good contribution they are to the Historic District. So here we are with the site. It's located on the south side of 17th Street, but just off of Fifth Avenue between Fifth and Sixth. Um, it is on the sort of south bound, one of the south boundaries of the district. Um, the site is currently a vacant lot. Uh, it was originally developed by two 1850s rowhouses that were, um, uh, converted in the later 19th century for the garment trade. In the early 1960s, those buildings were replaced, um, by that, this three story commercial building that we see in the, the middle, uh, view. And, um, in 2014, the commission approved a proposal to demolish that building and construct a new 14 story, 16 story, sorry, 16 story building, um, on the site. Um, that project, uh, started, the building was demolished, but the, the new building was never constructed. The permits expired in 2020. And here we have a, a view of the previous proposal for the previous approved design for the building. Um, it's designed by buyer Blender Bell, um, in. Sorry to see him go. Um, uh, uh, it was designed by buyer Blender Bell. It had a 14 story, uh, straight wall with two setback stories and then mechanical above. Um, as I mentioned, the, the, um, permit expired in 2020. Anbal, uh, acquired the project, uh, early this year. And since they had expired permits, started to explore what might be possible in, in terms of design here. Uh, of course, the commission has approved a number of infill buildings on side street locations throughout the district. Um, approaches vary, uh, but they generally follow two, two pathways. Um, a sort of more, um, uh, restrained approach that we see on the left where it's a, uh, simplified interpretation of the tripartite configuration, the base shaft and capital, uh, simplified ornamentation. Um, both of these projects that we see on the left-hand side are, um, located on 17th Street, including the 122 Fifth Avenue, uh, which is nearly completed directly across the street from our project site. Um, uh, alternatively, there's this sort of more inventive approach where, um, buildings are interpretations of traditional forms in new materials or, uh, looking for a deeper reading of the context and interpreting that in, in a contemporary building. And we see on the right, uh, two examples of those. This is also a through block project, uh, never developed, but approved by the commission in 2008, designed by Morisage Me. And we see there, um, a, a sort of classical building, um, executed in, um, a mesh material and then, uh, uh, an abstracted interpretation of the, the transitional layers and, um, generations of buildings in the, in the Historic District. So we, um, have really sort of ascribed to this, uh, more abstract reading of the district. Um, and that brings us to our proposal today, um, which we have here and we're seeing in the, the context of the block front. Um, and this is a, a design that both draws on the, the formal, the formal aspects of the district, um, and, um, and also applies an abstract interpretation of the, the broader historical and cultural, um, meaning of the district. And I, Jordan's going to dig into the details of that. But I think from a, from a formal perspective, what we're dealing with here is a, um, a building that. But I think from a, from a formal perspective, what we're dealing with here is a, a building that has that tripartite configuration. We have a three story base, a ten story shaft, and then a three story crown. That crown alludes to the, the fanciful tops that we see expressed all through the district. It has a sort of asymmetrical composition that creates a visual connection between the taller building at one fourteen Fifth Avenue and then mediates to the, the loft buildings on the side streets. We also think that this building does a very good job of maintaining some of the, the juxtaposition and variation that is characterizing the, the streetscape. There's lots of ups and downs and ins and outs. And in, if we were proposing just a simple street wall with a, a hardline cornice, that that variation is sort of lost in translation. So moving on, just looking at those characteristic streetscapes. The, the district has these generations of development that you all know very well. They all coexist within the district and really create this variety that we see in the streetscape. On the left, Fifth Avenue, which is primarily characterized by office and loft buildings and slightly taller scale than what we see generally on the side streets. The side streets are predominated by the, the store and loft building. And here's where you start to see a lot of that juxtaposition, the earlier generation of buildings interspersed with the, the taller store and loft buildings. On the right, we see a more sort of densely developed loft block. But even here, you start to see the variation at the tops of the buildings. I think it's very easy to oversimplify and say that there's a twelve story cornice in, in every building because what you see is that the, the cornices move up and down. There's facade treatment that extends above the cornice line. And so there's a great variation and, and a character, characteristic above the, above the cornice line of the district. Sixth Avenue and Broadway, we see the department stores. These, of course, have these sculptural terminations. On the left is Lord Taylor, the right is Siegel Cooper. And the sculptural forms really carry the department store identity, which of course is the namesake of the Ladies Mile Historic District. The sculptural forms are not limited to the department stores. We see them in those side street loft buildings. The two examples at the top are loft buildings that have more of a fanciful or sculptural termination. Flemish gables on Eighteenth Street and then this curved French modern example that's on Twenty Third. Similarly, we see avenue buildings that terminate or extend around to the side streets and then have either annexes or dormers that create an asymmetrical composition on the side streets. So there's an up and down that occurs naturally as buildings return around to the, from the avenue. The most of the buildings in the district were constructed in the decades that followed the World's Colombian Exposition. And so we see that has that influence throughout the district in terms of palette. It's a light palette, terracotta, limestone and buck brick. And we see the sort of rich ornamentation, that sort of highly textured and fluid frosting on, on all of the buildings. The ornamentation takes the form of a cast and, and molded cast and carved elements. And we see these in sort of classical motifs, the, the laurels and drapery swagged at the spandrels and the, the textured columns on the building at nine East Sixteenth Street. And similarly, at the, at the base of the building, masonry surrounds that create a depth of field between the, the, the metal underlay, the, the cast iron storefront installation and the, the framing elements. And so we, we can understand the, the sort of formal characteristics of the district by the, by the built fabric. But what we wanted to sort of touch on is the sort of broader historical and, and cultural experience of, of the district. New York City was, of course, the, the center of the garment industry. And the, it starts downtown, moves to Ladies Mile and then onward to the garment center. But really what sets Ladies Mile apart was the convergence of the garment industry and the department stores. So while everything was being made and, and sold in, from, at the wholesale level on, in the store and loft buildings, the department stores were selling and engaging with people. So this was both a place of wholesale and a place where people were shopping and there to be seen. And so this gives you a sense of how the district was experienced at the turn of the century. This is the opening of Siegel Cooper. The elevated, the crowds of people and sort of the energy at the street level. We further see this experience in the district captured here. The shopping, the garments people were wearing and buying. And so on the top, two, two photographs of the street scenes, what it was like in Ladies Mile at the turn of the century. And then two representations in art and illustration that really give you a sense of, of the, the spirit of the place. And so these sort of moments frozen in time and we were thinking about this and how this might inform a contemporary design for this site. And so I think with that, I'll pass the presentation to Jordan.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Jordan Rogo, partner at DXA Studio. I'm very pleased to be in person and not on Zoom anymore. So thank you very much for this. As Erin said, this project, you know, really took some unexpected turns. We're, we're really an analytical office. We'd like to do a lot of research. And so over the course of research, even having done a number of projects in Ladies Mile before, I think we made some discoveries that really surprised us in some, you know, unexpected and pleasant ways. One of them was, you know, we, we always knew that the Ladies Mile was a place where department stores started and expanded and then the, the L train brought people there. So it was very active. And then from a technological perspective, it added some seventy five thousand jobs in these store and loft buildings, manufacturing clothing and making ready to wear clothing for the first time. But what we discovered was that there was also kind of a cultural paradigm shift that happened that was facilitated by this technological shift that ran through the Ladies Mile District and tied to the, the art that we practiced, architecture. We had no idea about this. We knew fashion. But anyway, to kind of explain the importance of that paradigm shift, I want to start back in the beginning, which is the mid eighteen hundreds, late eighteen hundreds. Anyone watching the Gilded Age on HBO right now or Downton Abbey can identify the Victorian and Edwardian, you know, way of living, which is living life in a series of scenes with these ridiculous outfits with bustles and bows and corsets and giant hats that kept getting bigger every year. And the idealization of the female form was an S shape with an increasingly large bustle. And everyone was made to look older, as, as old as they possibly could. These were the values of the time. And so what happened in the late eighteen hundreds and one of the protagonists in the movement was Oscar Wilde all the way on the right. In eighteen eighty five, he wrote a, an article called The Philosophy of Dress that was published in New York City. He was then brought to New York City to lecture on this, famously declaring at Customs, if you were asked if he had anything to declare, he said, only my genius. And then he proceeded to give lectures about how horrible Victorian dresses, how it doesn't treat women rights, that we should live freely, we should celebrate the human form, we should celebrate the body and simplicity. And so he's an advocate for one of the first kind of outfits that came out of this is the tea gown on the bottom left hand corner there, which is just a simple fabric draping. Cartoonist kind of seized on the fact that, you know, fashion is quite cyclical. Human nature, starting with the Egyptians and Greeks, all the way through the Victorian era and then kind of back to what became known as, I guess, the flappers and kind of the, the simple, simple attire. So the corollary that we were unaware of is that a lot of the, the forefathers of the modernist movement in architecture were very tuned into the reform that was happening in fashion. Adolf Lewis, probably the most in tune, writing a manifesto called Ornament in Crime where he basically said anybody that practices ornament is a criminal. It should be arrested and the, the, the fate of society moving forward is the elimination of all ornament. Anyway, he went a little extreme, but some of the other architects, Mies van der Rohe, Frank Lloyd Wright and the like were either designed their own clothing or designed outfits to be worn in their architecture and seized on this kind of momentum to dispense with ornament and really practice functionality. So studying this, this history that we got so excited about, we wanted to create a building that acknowledged this incredible history. And think of it as almost a layered thing, not unlike clothing, that you could have a building that at its core was derivative of the historical form of the district, following its geometry, its rhythm, fenestration and the like. And then kind of thinking of another layer that is more a product of this kind of paradigm shift that happens that, that we just talked about. And for inspiration, we looked at Christo and Jean Claude and their incredible series of, of wrapped buildings. And what we loved about those is that they allow you to look at these buildings in an entirely different way, experience them in a different way. But some of the essential elements of those buildings are able to be communicated through this, this veil or fabric cloak. And we thought that was a really beautiful thing, that maybe this layering, we could, we could try something like that. And then when we think about materiality of the building, we look back to the Renaissance and the expression through marble and stone of fabric. And then more recently on the right, a material that made the most sense for us, which is aductile concrete or ultra high performance concrete, which there is a sample is sitting on the table. And so starting at the top of the building, the idea was that with a dormer, that we could express kind of one, one motion of kind of draping of, of kind of the essence of, of, of fabric. At the same time, relating to the district in these kind of exuberant examples above the street wall that Erin was sharing just a few minutes ago. And then kind of a third logic behind it is that we exist between the commercial palace building on the corner and then the store and loft buildings to our west. And we see this as kind of a transition from the, the two massings. So that, that's the kind of the, the dormer expression. At the bottom of the building, we thought this was the opportunity to kind of pull back the curtains, to pull back the fabric expression or cloak of the building and show some of that kind of underlying foundational building that is in line with, again, the more historic form of the district. And here on the bottom floors, we really tried to pay attention to the datums of the adjacent buildings, which are obviously quite important. The arrangement is, is, is a tripartite arrangement, as was the kind of historical form of the building. And then importantly, the aperture size, the windows are all quite large, more in alignment with the manufacturing past in some of the historic examples, whereas it becomes a little more residential up above. Here, an example of the, the datums aligning. And while the commercial palace building is a larger scale and the base really extends up to kind of a, a, a fourth story, we're relating more to the other fifty foot wide store and loft buildings. Zooming out a little bit more, you see the, the symmetry of the building really exists within the body of the building. Choosing to do larger apertures, which is very frequently practiced throughout the district, which we'll show in a study in a moment. That also kind of synthesized a couple of things, the structural framework consideration and the layouts of the units where we have split bedrooms on the other side. Here are some of the studies early on, just trying to understand the grid or arrangement of the facades. And for every example here, there's about ten to twelve buildings that practice this exact geometry. So think of these as the, as kind of the guiding principles to the arrangement. We gravitated towards the division of six, which is on the right. If you could see, there's, there's a, a kind of aggregation of massing that really happens on the edges of the building and that extend down to like a really kind of manneristic pier, transferring the weight all the way down. And then the, the aperture is kind of open in the middle. This is just something practiced through, through all of the buildings that we tried to build upon. On the left is the full elevation, again, trying, pointing out that, that center kind of symmetrical portion, the body of the building. On the right, you get a sense of the detailing of, of the UHPC. And again, there's an example sitting on the table here. It's part of a rain screen system. So it's kind of a thin concrete that sits proud of a, a moisture and thermal barrier that exists behind it. It's super high performance, an abundant amount of insulation. And so we'll show you details on that in a second. And then here is kind of the transition to the, kind of simple metal panel facade of the base, which was really in our, in our estimation analog to some of the cast iron storefronts that you see throughout the district. Palette of materials, many of which are on the, the table right there on the left. The, the perforated metal is the, is the mechanical screen up at the top of the building. From a distance, it quite looks like fabric, so it's continuing that theme. And that is expressed with the, the UHPC. UHPC exists on the, the street facade and then wraps the building about eighteen inches or so. And then it turns into a simple masonry building. The, the brick wraps the west side of the building and then the rear elevation. This is the study model. Exists down there. If you can't build a model, you probably can't build the building. So we wanted to make sure. Worked out pretty well. Here are a couple of examples of UHPC buildings that I, I believe have crossed your desk previously. One, in the process of being built, the other completed several years ago in Dumbo. We just wanted to point out, we have done a tremendous amount of research on the performance of the UHPC. That it has an inherent kind of protective coating on it that lasts several decades. And it avoids staining. It's rather smooth and biological growth. Even when you've outlived that, that performance, you're able to apply externally something similar to the mineral based product that we were here presenting a few weeks ago for the, for the church. By the way, the, the scaffolding came down at the church. It looks amazing. So if you guys are up there, take a look. Here's the rear elevation of the building, the south elevation, just simple kind of punched opening in masonry. We have a center balcony. All of this is very much in keeping with the, the character of the district and the, the backs of other buildings. This is the beginning of the long road to, to doing eighty individual custom panels of the UHPC. The way that we do that, that is all with a CNC router on foam and we pour the concrete on foam. So this has been a journey. We found a great partner in manufacturing up in Canada that's able to do this. And is very excited about it. This is sections of the, of the, the street wall. On the left, that's the UHPC with the insulation. We are performing well in excess of the, of building code and energy code requirements with an eye towards twenty thirty standards or benchmarks in energy performance. On the right, this is the, the setback at the, the metal storefront area. And lower down on the building, these are some plan details of that storefront area. One thing I want to point out just really quickly is that one of the fabric piers that, that comes down, we've given it some relief at the street level to kind of celebrate, celebrate it a little bit more. So we have some landscaping around it. And then that becomes a, a key feature, not just from the sidewalk, but from the, from the lobby of the building as well. The, a, a detail of the lighting and signage package. So we are just interested in illuminating the street level for safety and visibility of the storefront. So we have lights that are washing the, the fabric expression of the UHPC and then lights built into the awning downward. There is some visibility from West Sixteenth Street over a three story building to our south. So we, we captured the most visible advantage point from that. If you'd see in the middle, you can see a representation of our building. And the balconies, again, the masonry are very much in keeping with the, the district. And then finally, just to, to close out, I think, not unlike a project that we shared with you. Uh, and then finally, just to, to close out, I think, not unlike a project that we shared with you, uh, the 831 Broadway project, um, we saw this as an opportunity to really celebrate this enduring kind of legacy of ingenuity and innovation in New York City by, you know, sharing what was again, an unexpected series of discoveries for us. And we, we would love for people to learn from that in some capacity. Um, and, uh, we hope you find this appropriate.
Okay. Thank you very much. Commissioners, do we have questions? All right, Commissioner Goldblum.
Thank you. Um, why, what determined the height of the swoosh at the very top? The, the three-story element of that, was that a zoning thing? Was that an aesthetic choice, contextual? What was, what was behind that?
Yeah, just go to the mic.
Sure.
Because we're on Zoom and they can only hear.
Yeah. Um, it's a, a little bit of all of those things. Um, primarily there's zoning, uh, as of right. I know as of right is subjective when we're in blame works, but, uh, the, the way that you calculate that is based on a percentage for every foot vertical you go, you lose a percentage width. So it falls exactly within that. Uh, and then the top portion is, is much more subjective. The last few feet, we had it five feet taller, we had it five feet shorter, and it was really just about a visual composition. So the, the lion's share of it was, uh, to, to adhere to zoning. And then that top portion was really just to get the gesture of fabric, to get the, um, to get the appearance right, as well as, uh, the, the nature of how you build the UHPC panels.
Okay, thanks.
All right. Any other questions? Commissioner Jefferson?
Is, is there, um, the fabric covering is only on the front facade? Or is it also on the back? Or does it hint somewhat in the back at all? Or is it just the front?
Uh, the fabric, uh, expression, the UHPC exists on the street wall. Um, we saw again, an opportunity to tie into how most of the buildings, uh, especially store and loft buildings that are mid-block, focused almost entirely on the elevation and then went to kind of a secondary material inside some rear elevation. So we, we followed that example.
So I need to think of you.
Sorry, Commissioner Chu.
Uh, yeah, I just had a question about the plan. You were talking about the ground floor and making more space. Just trying to understand, when I look at the rendering, the, is that a glazed terracotta tile? The vertical fluted?
The vertical fluted is actually a pressed metal.
Oh, it's metal, okay. That's just a few inches behind the face of the UHPC. But when you get to the ground floor, there's some other recess.
That, that's actually a 3D print of it. We didn't get the metal done in time. But that's, just to give you an idea of both the color and, uh, in depth and scale. I'm sorry.
I'm trying to understand the, the plan.
Sure.
If it's right there, if there's no depth, it's just a facade.
Yeah.
That steps back, but then at the ground floor, it looks different.
Yeah. So the best way, I think we had a, a detailed section to that right here.
Oh.
If you look here, you'll, you'll.
Just again, because we're on Zoom, they can't hear you, but there should be a pointer.
Oh, there is. Good. Okay.
Not that one.
Not this one? Different players. Well, here, let me see closer. We'll do closer. Oh, it's a little delayed. All right. So if you could see, like, there's quite a bit of depth off of the facade here, where the UHPC is projected, uh, beyond the slab edge. And, and that is an opportunity to load as much insulation as possible into the rain screen.
Mm-hmm.
And then you, then on the example on the right here, we're, we're able to push that back. So I think, is that, is it about eight inches? Yeah, eight, eight inches of relief to the, to the face of the metal panel.
But then take it to the ground floor.
Sure.
Yeah.
Something else happens there.
There.
There's a recess or something.
Um, yes.
Column is now free.
There, yes. The, right here.
Yeah.
This is the area. So this is projected in just at the storefront. And there is, yeah, a small garden area and then the column is freestanding at that, at that level.
So that's just a.
Just at, just at the, the ground.
Single story.
Yeah. And if I could go here, the rendering is a little dark, but you get a sense, this steps back here. And then we have a garden area.
So your entry doors have a side right vestibule.
Exactly right. Exactly. Yeah.
And it's solid or glass or?
Uh, uh, glass. We tried to make that as open as possible so that you could kind of celebrate the, uh, the column.
Just out of curiosity, why did you solid opaque the front doors?
Uh, solid opaque the front doors, um, because we found, uh, examples around the district of these beautiful hefty doors. And we felt that, um, the, the base, most of the moves that we're making in the base, uh, kind of construe the, the, the more manufacturing history, these larger windows. And that the, the wood door, uh, could, like, both in its kind of tactile, like the, the feel of opening that, um, and its presence, we could convey a sense of, of, of residential in contrast. So just purely kind of a, a design decision.
And lastly, how far does a canopy project?
Uh, six feet.
Okay.
All right. Other questions? Okay. We're, let's move to public testimony and we may have more questions after that. Is there anyone in the room who wishes to speak on this item? Noting that there is not, I will turn it over to Gregory Kala to take us through any remote participants.
Thank you, Chair Cole. We have one person raised and attends us now. That being Lucy Levine from the Historic District Council. Lucy Levine, I'm promoting you to panelist right now. Stay on your line, state your name for the record, and you will have three minutes.
My name is Lucy Levine. I'm speaking on behalf of the Historic District Council. HTC finds this to be a very interesting addition to the Ladies Mile Historic District. We had reservations about some of the applicant's precedent images, but we ultimately feel that this building's alignment with its neighbors at the top and its three-story expression at the base, which is typical of buildings in this district, make this building an appropriate part of the district. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony. Okay. First, we'll be hearing from John Graham from the Victorian Society in New York. John Graham, I'm promoting you to panelist right now. So please unmute your lines, state your name for the record, and you will have three minutes to speak. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, John Graham for the Victorian Society. Well, this is one of the more interesting proposals we've seen. Being the Victorian Society, we were, of course, captivated by the images showing precedence and inspiration. We think it's usually a bad idea to attempt to translate a traditional architectural ornament, like a draped wreath swag or a stone veil over a statue with the drape of a Victorian dress into an entire building. However, this proposed design does some things remarkably well. As an infill building, it fits beautifully into its context. It's the right height. The quite literal mediation between the heights of the two flanking buildings creates something of a crown, an important harmonizing feature. It has a three-story base, also harmonizing with its neighbors and with typical historic buildings of this age and type. And it's masonry, or should we say drapery? Facade is contextual in material and infinitely more compatible with the district than a glass facade would be. So when seen down the block from a distance, we feel the building will not call attention to itself and will be a comfortable part of the streetscape. But as one approaches the building and focuses on, focuses on it, it appears to become something completely different. It has nice proportions, uses a good variety of materials, and incorporates inter- interesting details. We especially like the way the curtain wall drapes over what might be a dressmaker's structural form at the base. This building will be noticed. But despite these unusually literal references and attention drawing features, we find that the effect somehow contains itself within the building's own boundaries. It doesn't detract from, minimize, or overwhelm its neighbors or the street. This is not an easy thing to accomplish when not designing in a traditional historic style. We support this proposal and hope the Commission approves it. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you so much for your testimony. I do not see any further hands raised on the list. So I will note for the record that Manhattan Community Board Five recommends denial. And I would bring it back to you, Chair Cole.
Okay. Well, of the two speakers, we had, uh, a lot of support, um, so congratulations on that. So you're welcome to address anything that may have come up at the community board that resulted in that, uh, resolution or any other final comments you'd like to make before we begin our discussion.
Uh, thank you, Chair. Um, the community board was interesting. It was a lively conversation, as you might imagine, um, both at the committee and, and the full board. It was a split vote. Um, so it, I think the final vote at the, at the full board was 17 to 11. And the, 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 uh, conversation was really whether it needed to be a literal representation um, of, of the base shaft and capital, the sort of standard approach. And, um, you know, we firmly believe otherwise and, and DXA has done an extraordinary job of, of, um, uh, bringing it to life, something different. We think that there's certainly room for that in, in the Historic District. Um, it's great to hear all the positive feedback, though. That's fantastic.
Great. Okay. Commissioners, any final questions? Okay. So let's move to our discussion. Commissioner Hope Smith, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
So move.
And Commissioner Chapin, would you second that motion? All in favor, say aye.
Okay.
Any opposed? All right, the hearing is closed and we'll begin our discussion, um, on this new building. Both, as always, height, massing, composition, design, materials, and details will be the focus of our comments. Commissioner Ginsburg, would you like to start this one?
So when I first saw a picture, I wasn't sure, but it was a masterful presentation and you've basically convinced me that a lot of thought went into this building. I'm not sure there should be too many like these, but, but, uh, uh, I basically think it's appropriate and thank you for the presentation.
Thank you, Commissioner Lefebvre.
So DXA is very well-known for all the research it puts into all of its projects. You know, some, you know, need a lot of evolution, some kind of hit it right on the nail, um, hit the nail on the head. Uh, so first I want to thank you for all of the thought, your great storytelling. But the context is, um, and your thinking behind it kind of meshes very, very well. And this whole idea of doing an infill building that is a transition in this neighborhood, um, in terms of style and uses, and I know this is going to be residential, not commercial, um, is, uh, you know, it, it works well and it pays tribute to what this district is all about in a very interesting way, um, incorporating, um, a very elegant, um, and sophisticated but modern form, uh, with high-performance materials and, um, I, I, I just think it works very nicely. So just to speak specifically before you even started talking, I mean, the first thing that I thought of when I saw the bottom of the building, the entryway, is that, you know, this is like opening your curtain. And so the whole, um, it's like a wonderful way to enter a building. And it's a wonderful statement about, again, about the broader context and the history that was here. And, you know, you started at the top and continue it down. I mean, in a way, when you do that, it, it can even flow like a dress with, you know, feet at the, or legs at the bottom, but still with a little, you know, flowy skirt. And, um, I mean, I just kind of envisioned all of these things relating to, um, everything you talked about at every step of the way. I think the, the top is, uh, just a be, I mean, the angle's beautiful and, you know, the, the peak inside to what's, uh, going on there, it's like privacy, but it's, it's a peek-a-boo, but it's open to the sky. Um, the variations in the windows, uh, just help with the flow. I like the layering of materials at the base. And the wood door makes complete sense because it is residential and you have to differentiate between the uses. Um, but, and then you see right into this lobby, which will also speak to that a, as well. I, I have to say, um, you know, it's, uh, I, I think you did a very good job.
Thank you. Commissioner Chu.
Yeah, um, really interesting design. I think that I commend you on going out there and experimenting and trying something different. Paul. And also that means pushing unusual details and maybe new, one-of-a-kind conditions that you maybe haven't been done before. Um, there's probably lots of those details as I look at it. Um, yeah, I really support this approach to trying to find a modern and different interpretation to fabric that is historic. And I think it creates new energy and it, it starts, people look at buildings, they start to look at their relationships and they start to question why you made the moves. Um, I think it's a very appropriate design. My only comments, and I'm just going to say this because I can't stop myself, but there's I, I, I love the gesture. I just, it's all about proportion. I, I, I wished the two openings weren't the same height below. There's something a little too stiff about it. I wish that, it's, it's interesting because usually when you open a curtain to a theater, you're opening to see what's behind it. This is more about the curtain itself. And when you darken the material that's behind, it makes me think it's less important. Um, that's okay. It's, it's the contrast that you're looking for. But I do wish in plan that I wasn't hitting a wall that was eight inches there. And the depth, if you were to look at this in elevation and you looked at that in plan, that's, that gesture in plan, oh my gosh, I feel like I'm just welcomed right into there in, in what might have been traditional example of an arcade or something, but in a very modern interpretation. Um, you, you got the expression, I just wish there was a little bit more there. And I, last thing is, I think that the top is really interesting because you, unlike many other design proposals, are trying to bridge other context buildings. You're really thinking about your context and trying to merge the block as opposed to stand out being me. So you're doing both here and I think that's successful. You stand out, but at the same time, you're, you're very respectful to your, the obvious delta in height between your two neighbors here. Um, I don't know, how you gesture those two, the top highest point, just minor changes in that will have a very different sense of expression. But I do like, I would just say, go back to your gesture, the gesture of the drape, the gesture. And the more gesture, because that's purely ornamental, you can do whatever you want there. Thank you.
Commissioner Master?
Yeah, I, I want to congratulate the, the architectural team, um, for very well-researched, um, creative expression of the history of this district. Um, you even have the support of the Victorian Society and HTC, which is incredible. Um, I only wish that Fred were here because I'd love to hear his reaction as well. Um, you know, overall, I'm, I'm very supportive. Um, I love the top where you, you basically take the drape and you join the, the two adjoining, the heights of the two adjoining, um, buildings. And at the same time, you're letting in light from the rear and the side and doing the drapery. Um, I, I think, I think it's, um, startling and elegant, um, and I can find it appropriate.
Thank you. Commissioner Jefferson?
This is an architect's facade interpretation of fabric over a body or fabric over an object. And it's well done.
Hmm.
The, 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 the issue for me really is, um, there were two examples. There was one, one example showing Vestal Virgin, Tousi, I think it's pronounced, and the, the, uh, the, the example of, of, uh, where is it? Uh, the example of Cristal. And this one is the example of Cristal, where at the bottom it folds back. And when it becomes at the And when it becomes at the bottom, it becomes exposing, it's like a dress coming down and exposing the slip, end of the pattern. And then I look at it and I say, well, what about the head, the top? And they do have a gesture there of the curve, and you you get a feeling of termination. But then I think the fabric also should be curved. It should be kind of a necklace, a way of finishing it. But it's a really wonderful interpretation of fabric kind of folding itself vertically on a on a facade.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Holford Smith?
Yeah, I agree with all my fellow commissioners. I think it was a really great presentation and a great interpretation of what the Ladies Mile building could be. Find it appropriate as is.
All right, Commissioner Chapin?
Well, I'm going, I'm being the third person who says refers to it as an elegant piece of architecture. I I'll just address sort of the basics, which are the height and massing, I think it's fine, the transition is good. I think the tripartite arrangement, the fenestration, and the materials are all very appropriate. But, you know, obviously, what's most impressive about this is a real departure, and it creates, you know, it's some sort of arabesque flowing sculptural work, which reminded me of Giorgio Cui's painting, which is animates the inanimate, and I feel like this gives an animation to the building, which is just really a rare thing. It happens with architecture, you see it, but it's it's unusual, so I commend the team.
Thank you. And Commissioner Goldblum?
I'm I'm, I guess I'm glad to be last. I I think that I feel like Stephen a little bit, that I can't help myself, but so be it. I I think it is, it is a generally appropriate design, start with that, massing and all that. And I'll certainly vote for it to be approved, but I I throw these in just for for thought. First of all, I think that from from a precedent perspective, there's actually a fair amount of precedent in this idea of building facades fabric. You have, right next door, Frank Gehry stated that that was his intent with with the with the building, you know, a few yards away from us. There's the the shop building, the Fifty-seventh Street, where the side with the terracotta was very much in the same kind of physical quality. And there's lots of our deco buildings that that kind of use that rhythmic development of a section of the through the stone to create a kind of recollection of fabric in the in the vertical expression of the facade. And those examples made me think about this in looking at the sample that I'm worried about, that I mean, that the buildings of the Ladies Mile Historic District are very materially. You know, they have a very strong sense of material, and I worry that this very smooth, relatively inarticulate material with a matte finish could feel cartoonish and thin. And I would suggest that if they feel like it, they could explore variations to the surface that might give it more materiality for its fabric material, whether it's, you know, shiny and glistening like like the metal of Frank Gehry or or the the glossy porcelain of Shop or something more gritty or, you know, ma- masonry-like, like the brick of the of the district. I think materiality would help this expression, number one. Number two, the base, really, to me, the first thing I thought of was that it looks very like, much like an Art Nouveau facade. And there are lots of those that use the same shapes and curves and asymmetries to create a kind of space in between architecture and and decoration and painting and graphics. And I think that Stephen's idea about about heightening the asymmetry by messing with the 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 raised curtain at the base would be really, really powerful. Two things about the top, the top is very much like, it's like, architecturally, it's volumed. You know, if you think about the classic, you know, late Renaissance early-broke church with the high pedant had a had a volume that connects the low and the high. So architecturally, it's got a lot of pedigree to that shape. And I think that as a valued, it basically works. I think that the choice to render the facade, the setback facade behind it in the same material was a mistake. I think that if there's one thing you can, if you go to page eight and look at the streetscape of, you know, and it's very true in the district, that cornice line at the top of a building in this district is where your eye stops. That's where the design stops. And it's not, it's not like, you know, a a nineteen twenties district where the setback is part of the design. The setback, the the stuff that you see above the cornice line in this district is not meant to be viewed as part of the composition. So I would say that, you know, the rendering of that setback pulls it forward in a way that I think makes it less effective as a kind of gloopy version of a cornice that 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 it seems to want to be. Lastly, those little windows at the top that get cut off by the design seems like an oops to me. But I I think it's totally lovely, and let's see what happens.
Okay, all right. So I think some interesting thoughts about how to push the expression at the top and the bottom even further, but I think we have enough to support it and approve it today. But you can certainly continue to think about those things, and we'd be happy to work with you. But for now, Commissioner Ginsburg, would you make a motion to approve it?
With pleasure. With regards to LPC twenty-four dash oh three three two three ten West Seventeenth Street Ladies Mile Historic District. A vacant, formerly mid-twentieth century commercial building designed by Batao and Verini and built in nineteen sixty-one to nineteen sixty-three. Application is to construct a new building. I note that the building in the Ladies Mile Historic Districts were constructed in several phases, beginning in the eighteen thirties and continuing into the present day, with the majority of the existing structures having been built in major developments phases before nineteen fifteen. But afterward, several existing buildings were altered and converted for new uses, and of the few buildings were constructed or altered in the mid-twentieth century. I further note that the West Seventeenth Street streetscape between Fifth and Sixth Avenue consists primarily of vertically oriented stores, lofts, and office buildings built in the early twentieth century, featuring ten or more floors, light-colored masonry facades and painted metal and glass infill, and small masonry buildings built during the mid and late nineteenth century and later altered, situated primarily at the western end of the block. I recommend approval finding that the construction of the new building at this vacant site to align with adjacent neighbors in plain will strengthen the continuity of the street wall and enhance the streetscape. That the height and massing of the building designed to transition between the large corner building and the typical mid-block building will relate well to the predominant height of the buildings on the block. And that the designing materials of the front facade, including ultra-high-performance cast concrete cladding, with sculptured drape form, textured metal base, printed glass balconies, and metal-matched mechanical screen, recall the texture and cast ornament found in the building, buildings within the historic districts, while distinguishing itself from its neighbors in a contemporary way. That the exaggerated sweep of the parapet recalls the traditional ornamentations such as swag and garlands found in the building within the district, while also recalling the district's history of manufacturing fabric and garments in modern referential design. That the cascading setback provides a new interpretation to the expressive treatment of upper-floor grounds and corners of tall buildings within the historic district while breaking down the massing of the upper floors. That the drape in form of the top of the building helps the massing transition from the taller adjacent building. That the drape film of the cast concrete cladding parts at the lower floors in an asymmetrical way in conversation with the architectural gestures of the top of the building to reveal textured metal cladding at the entrance surrounds surrounds that relate to traditional large entrance assemblies and straw fronts commonly found at building spaces within the historic district. That the fenestration pattern featuring wider center bays and narrow side bays, as well as the change in material and proportions between the base and the upper floors, will be consistent with the typical organization of facade elements at tall, narrow loft buildings within the historic district. That the simple modern design of the middle entrance marquee will not overwhelm the streetscape and will be in keeping with the simple design of the modern canopy found in other buildings within the historic district. But the proposed sidewalk uplighting and marquee downlighting will not overwhelm the large scale of this building or detract from the streetscape. That the roof facade featuring brick masonry and punched openings and partial width balconies and the side feature facade featuring plain masonry will be simply designed and well-scaled to the context in which it is seen, thereby maintaining a subordinate wall within the streetscape. And that the rooftop mechanical screening will be seen in the context of other tall buildings who will not detract from the streetscape. And that the proposed new building will not diminish the special architectural and historic character of the Ladies Mile Historic District.
Thank you. And Commissioner Chapin, would you second that motion?
Second.
All right. Mark, will you call the vote?
Chair Cal?
Aye.
Commissioner Chapin?
Aye.
Commissioner Chen? Uh, I'm sorry. Hi, Commissioner Chu?
Aye.
Commissioner Ginsburg?
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum?
Aye.
Commissioner Jefferson? Commissioner Luthy? Commissioner Master?
Aye.
Commissioner Holford Smith?
Aye.
With nine in favor and unopposed, the motion passes.
All right, that's approved.
Eight in favor.
Thank you. We'll move to the next item.
All right, the next item is public hearing item number eight, LPC twenty-four dash zero three one zero nine. An application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Manhattan, Block twelve oh four, Lot fifty-four, sixty West Ninety-first Street, in the Upper West Side, Central Park West Historic District. This is a Roman escrival style rowhouse designed by Henry L. Harris, he built in eighteen eighty-nine to ninety. And the application is to construct a rear addition. We'll pause for just a moment to switch out applicants.
All right. Good afternoon, Commissioner Sarah Scher from Higgins Quasbarth and Partners. I'm here to present sixty West Ninety-first Street. I'm joined today by, with Mark Shore from Shore Assets, the owner of the property, as well as William Leggio from William Leggio Architects, the architect for the project. So the application today is for a one-story addition on an existing L at the rear of sixty West Ninety-first Street, which is one of seven houses that were developed by Eli Martin and designed by Henry L. Harris in eighteen eighty-nine to eighteen ninety. As you can see, the building is located at the northern end of the Upper West Side, Central Park West Historic District. So earlier this year, there is a staff level permit for a three-story rear yard addition, as well as a stair bulkhead. The house is currently under construction to be converted into an eight-unit residential building. So the application here is just for, as you see on the right, that this one-story addition on top of the existing historic L. So throughout the presentation, there'll be existing, approved, and proposed. This, these are some photos of the existing conditions of the rear. It's not visible from the public right away. It's a brick facade with punched window openings. It has been coated. As you can see on the right photo, our parapet has been raised slightly, so it's a little bit taller than the neighbor to the east. Just some closer-up photos at the top of the building. The air conditioning sleeves are going to be removed and filled with brick as part of the staff level scope, and some of that conduit, all the conduit will be removed as well. There is an existing door out to the roof of the existing L. Just some block context, so that you know the history of this particular block, Run Ninety-first Street between Central Park West and Columbus Avenue. So the earliest map we have from eighteen ninety-one shows the speculative rowhouse development that's taking place at the time, the first construction on the block. By nineteen oh two, that infill, that has all been infilled, and at the western, at the eastern end on Central Park West, we have an eight-story apartment building, the Eldorado Flats, which is then replaced by the Eldorado Apartment Buildings, the thirty-three-story apartment buildings on Central Park West. Also, by nineteen fifty-two, we have a thirteen-story building built on Ninetieth Street, projecting into the donut. Existing context here, the the historic district ends at the western end of the rowhouses, so we have a nonhistoric twenty-seven-story building at the western end of the block. And here's a photo from the roof of sixty West Ninety-first Street L, looking east towards Eldorado. You can see that thirteen-story building from nineteen thirty-one projecting into the donut. Also, from this vantage point, you can see two Ls that have been extended vertically prior to designation, but very close to the existing property. These are those two extensions that we can see from that photo. So on the left, we have forty-one West Ninetieth Street, which was expanded vertically, and there are doors leading to the roof of that. On the right, we have fifty-two West Ninety-first Street, which has been expanded both vertically and horizontally. And this just shows how these types of Ls have been modified throughout the Upper West Side historically to accommodate changing uses and conversions to multiple residences. I just, you know, a compilation of landmarks approvals that we find similar to this on the Upper West Side. I think of particular note are the two bottom ones, which are also one-story additions to existing three-story Ls. Once again, existing, approved, and proposed. The approved work is the staff level approval from this year. The proposed is for this one-story brick addition with a punched window opening and a door leading to the roof of that. It's similar in design to the rest of the facade, but slightly simplified. Here's that approved section, looking east. The red represents what was approved at staff level. The brick behind the red is the existing historic L. And here in section, we're seeing the proposed one-story addition, eleven feet high, four and a half feet setback from the historical, so it will read as a separate volume. And then just in plan, this is the third floor, showing that that new addition will serve as a bedroom for what otherwise would be a studio apartment. And then this is just showing a new door leading to a terrace on top of the the L addition. And then some final images in context. Here's the approved building with the darker hatch with its neighbors to the east and west, and then proposed. And then just to summarize appropriateness, you know, this is not public from, this is not visible from the public right away. The addition is setback, so it will read as a separate volume. And its materiality and punched window openings very similar to the more utilitarian character of the rear elevation. And we feel this is also how these Ls have been modified over time for multi-residential use.
Thank you very much. Commissioners, any questions on this one? Okay, let's see if we have any testimony. Is there anyone who'd like to speak on this item? All right, noting that there's not anyone in the room to speak on this item, I will turn it over to Gregory to see if we have any remote participants.
Thank you, Chair Cal. First, we'll be hearing from Megan Fitzpatrick from Landmark West. Megan Fitzpatrick, I am promoting you to panelist right now. Please unmute your line and state your name for the record, and you'll have three minutes to speak. Thank you.
Hello, Commissioners. Megan Fitzpatrick, speaking on behalf of Landmark West. The Landmark West Certificate of Appropriateness Committee believes this is a fairly inoffensive addition to an already approved at staff level three-story rear yard addition, and we recommend approval. Our committee consistently laments the incremental shift in the character of the donut and cautions the cumulative effect more incursions into the donut will create. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony. Next up, we will be hearing from Lucy Levine from the Historic Districts Council. Lucy Levine, I'm promoting you to panelist right now. Please unmute your line and state your name for the record. You'll have three minutes to speak. Thank you.
Hi, Commissioners. My name is Lucy Levine. I'm speaking on behalf of the Historic Districts Council. Because of the consistency of the rear yards on the rest of this block, HTC finds this proposed fourth-floor addition to be an inappropriate violation of rear massing. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony. I'm looking through the attendees list now. I do not see any further hands raised. So I will note for the record that Manhattan Community Board seven recommends approval, and I'll bring it back to you, Chair Cal.
Okay, thank you. All right, so you have so two two speakers who recommend approval or two letters of testimony, but one that had some concerns about the height, if you would like to address that.
Sure. I mean, I I think, as you can see from those two examples that are just for Sure. I mean, I think as you can see from those two examples that are just four houses down, this type of change has historically happened at the block to increase the height of the rear yard Ls for multifamily use.
Okay. Commissioners, any final questions? Okay, so why don't we go ahead and move to close the hearing.
So moved.
Thank you. Commissioner Lutfi, would you second that motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. All right, the hearing is closed and we'll begin our discussion. And so as was presented, this is a, just a setback, one-story rooftop addition on top of the existing L. The applicant has shown that the block is varied with apartment buildings and other Ls of varied heights, including some others that have been added to in a similar way and raised to an additional floor. So we'll begin our discussion. Commissioner Jefferson, I don't know if you were here for any of this, were you? Yeah, I thought so. Okay, Commissioner Horford Smith?
Sure. I think given the variety of heights and depths of the Ls and different accretions at the back of this donut, that this modest little one-story addition is appropriate. I don't think it overwhelms the building or the donut, so I think it's appropriate.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Chapin?
Yeah, it's a little bit higher L than usual, but I think it's modest and appropriate.
Commissioner Ginsburg?
Oh, cool, cool.
Commissioner Chen? All right, does anyone have any different thought? Okay, so I think we are in, have a consensus and we can go ahead and motion Commissioner Horford Smith.
In the matter of LPC twenty-four zero three one zero nine, sixty west ninety first street, Upper West Side, Central Park West Historic District. A Roman escrival style row house designed by Henry L. Harris and built eighteen eighty-nine ninety. Application is to construct a rear addition. I note that the building's style, scale, materials and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the Upper West Side, Central Park West Historic District. I recommend approval, finding that the proposed work will not alter or eliminate any significant architectural features, that the addition on top of the existing rear yard L will not be visible for many public thoroughfare and will be set back and the top floor will be retained, thereby maintaining a sense of the building's original massing, that other fourth floor additions exist within the block, including an addition at a neighbor rear extension, that the simple massing of the addition, when seen in conjunction with the existing L and the approved rear yard addition, will not overwhelm the building or adjacent buildings, that the simple design and materiality of the addition, featuring brick cladding, a punched window opening and metal railings, will be in keeping with the residential scale and character of other buildings in the block, and that the proposed work will not detract from the special architectural and historic character of the building or the historic district.
All right, thank you. And Commissioner Chapin, would you second that motion?
Second.
Thank you. Mark, will you call the vote?
Chair Cal?
Aye.
Commissioner Bland?
Aye.
Commissioner Chapin?
Aye.
Commissioner Chen?
Aye.
Commissioner Chu?
Aye.
Commissioner Ginsburg?
Aye.
Commissioner Jefferson?
Abstain.
Or abstain.
Abstain. Okay. Commissioner Lutfi?
Aye.
Commissioner Master?
Aye.
Commissioner Horford Smith?
Aye.
With nine in favor and none opposed and one abstained, the motion passes.
That's approved. Thank you. And we'll move to the next item.
All right, next item is public hearing item number nine, LPC twenty-three dash one-two-one-eight-eight, an application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Manhattan, block twelve thirteen, lot one oh five, one fifty-seven west eighty-second street in the Upper West Side, Central Park West Historic District. This is a Queen Anne style row house designed by William Baker, built in eighteen eighty-five to eighty-six, and the application is to construct a rooftop addition and modify a bay window.
Hello, my name is Maggie Hamel. I am an architect and project manager at Vaxtingwee Architects. I am presenting one fifty-seven west eighty-second street where we are proposing a rooftop addition for a stair bulkhead and a penthouse, as well as a modification to an existing bay at the rear facade. I'll start with the rooftop. We have done a 3D rendering to indicate visibility where we have lots of tree cover in reality. So we'll start without any obstruction to show the visibility of the front corner of the penthouse from Amsterdam Avenue. The family currently living in the house would like to add a penthouse for long-term family visitors. And we're proposing a two hundred and eighty square foot area towards the rear of that roof. From the studies in the top right corner, you can see a bird's eye view of the proposed volume on the roof. Closest to the front of the building is a stair bulkhead with a roof profile as low as possible to accommodate a usable stair as a configuration of the existing interior stair. That leads to the volume of the penthouse at the rear, which is divided into two separate roof lines. On the left side, which is the western side, we have a flat roof pitched only for water drainage. This side of the penthouse is most visible from Amsterdam Avenue, which can be seen in the middle row of renderings as well as the bottom row. The side of the penthouse towards the east has an inclined roof plane that is meant to accommodate solar collectors. The largest driving force of the renovation is to remove all fossil fuels from the house, convert all four apartments to electric and remove all natural gas. We would like to offset energy usage by incorporating as many solar panels as possible on the eastern side of that penthouse continuing down the pitched bulkhead roof. From the, the lower row of renderings, you can see a zoomed out view from the southeast corner of Amsterdam and West eighty-second street, where the front corner of that proposed penthouse is visible. If you look to the right, the most right rendering on the bottom row shows where we already have a building in the background that is obstructing the sky plane in that same area of the penthouse. It's dashed in and it's called out as Redeemer Presbyterian Church on West eighty-third street. We are not able to see this because of tree cover in real life, but in the rendering study, this became apparent to us. We provided photos of a precedent study in the Upper West Side, Central Park West Historic District of minimally visible rooftop additions. And we collected nine examples here photographed with addresses in the nearby neighborhood. There is currently a mock-up on the roof of the bulkhead and the penthouse proposed. These photos show photos that are not zoomed in and then directly adjacent to that is the zoomed in view from that vantage point. This, these three vantage points are taken from the west side on Amsterdam Avenue and on both the east and west side of Amsterdam Avenue. This is the greatest visibility. On the lower photos, we can see a raised portion of that mock-up, which is representing chimney flues that will be extended. The mock-up insinuates that it will be a solid volume, but rather it will be stainless steel round flue extensions that we feel will blend into the background sky plane. As we walk east on West eighty-second street, visibility diminishes and once standing close to the building on both the east and west sides, there is no visibility of the proposed rooftop addition. Again, photos indicating the existing mock-up that is at the roof level. We have incorporated an eighteen inch setback from the rear, the existing rear facade of the building to the proposed rear wall of the rooftop addition. This allows the existing cornice lines along the sister houses to continue and provide a clear delineation between existing building and new addition. We have taken photos from the rear terrace on the third floor, looking up at the mock-up and shown its relation to the neighboring buildings. At the rear facade, you can see at the back of this section, we have a partial width addition. I'll refer to it as the dogleg. We have an existing bay that projects about eight inches from the existing dogleg facade with existing brick corbeling. You can barely see it in the top left photo. There are two sections of corbeling on that existing bay. We are proposing to lower the sill of that bay to align with the interior floor level in order to capture more space for the small room in that extension. We would like to salvage the existing corbeling, relocate it to that lowered sill level and rebuild the existing bay in wood painted black with a proposed glazing configuration of three tilt-turn windows. This allows for two operable windows flanking the center window, which coordinates with the interior program of trying to fit a kitchen with a countertop and a sink on the interior side of that bay. The corbeling will be salvaged and we have done a precedent study of approved bays in the neighborhood. Similar in language to the proposed bay. We would like to transition from the brick corbeling to the wood-framed bay with a plinth base eight inches, shown just above the corbeling in this elevation, eight inches of stone as a transition between the masonry corbeling and the wood-framed bay. As seen in the lower left-hand photo, we have seen a precedent similar to this on a primary facade in the historic district. And we felt that the style of the proposed paneling was in keeping with the context in the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Commissioners, do we have any questions on this one? Okay, so there's the two components, the rooftop addition, which has minimal visibility and modifying of the bay, which is on the inside face of the L. So if there are no questions, we'll move to public testimony. Is there anyone in the room who would like to testify in this item? Okay, so noting there is not, I will turn it to Gregory to see if we have remote participants.
Thank you, Chair Cal. We have one hand raised in the attendees list, that being Megan Fitzpatrick from Landmark West. Megan Fitzpatrick, I am promoting you to panelist right now. Please unmute your line and state your name for the record, and you will have three minutes to speak. Thank you.
Hello, Commissioners, Megan Fitzpatrick speaking on behalf of Landmark West. The Landmark West Certificate of Appropriateness Committee appreciates this new rooftop penthouse addition is sufficiently set back and is minimally visible from the main thoroughfare. Our committee believes the proposed bay window design enhances the character of the dogleg. We appreciate the recreation of the corbeling details below the new window. However, we have to question the choice of adding nonoriginal bluestone material to the design. We suspect limestone would be more appropriate. Our committee recommends approval. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony. I do not see any further hand raised, so I will note for the record that Manhattan Community Board Seven recommends conditional approval, suggesting that the applicant replicate the corbeling below the west L extension window. And I will bring you back to you, Chair Cal.
All right, thank you. So I'd like to ask if you'd like to respond to the comments.
Well, we would be open to limestone material on the bay as opposed to bluestone.
Okay. All right, Commissioners, any final questions? All right, let's make a motion to close. Commissioner Master, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
Thank you. And Commissioner Jefferson, would you second that motion?
So second.
All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? All right, the hearing is closed and we'll begin our discussion. There are the two components, as we described, the rooftop addition, which is sloped to accommodate solar panels and has some minimal visibility from the street that has been described in the renderings and presentation drawings of the mock-up. And then the modification of the bay window at the interior face of the L. Commissioner Lutfi, would you like to start this one?
Sure. As you said, the addition is really minimally visible. And the, the bay window is not. So I feel like I can approve this.
Vice Chair Bland?
Similarly, appropriate.
Commissioner Chen? Commissioner Ginsburg?
Oh, congratulations.
Commissioner Chapin?
The bay window modification is something we allow all the time, in fact.
Commissioner Horford Smith?
I agree, it's appropriate.
Commissioner Jefferson?
Appropriate, except perhaps the back facade. This idea of moving it three feet back seems to make sense to me.
Commissioner Master?
I think it's appropriate.
Commissioner Chu?
I would agree that the dimension to the back facade should be looked at with staff. It looks tight.
Okay, so I think we have a consensus to approve and we'll ask him to work with the staff to set the rear facade back at appropriate amount.
Excuse me? In the matter of docket, twenty-three dash twelve, one eighty-eight, one fifty-seven west eighty-second street, Upper West Side, Central Park West Historic District. A Queen Anne style row house designed by William Baker and built in eighteen eighty-five, eighty-six. The application is to construct a rooftop addition and modify a bay window. I note that the building's style, scale, materials and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the Upper West Side, Central Park West Historic District. I recommend approval in finding that the proposed rooftop addition will not eliminate any significant architectural features, that the rooftop addition will be modest in size and set back from the front and rear facades, retaining a sense of the building's original massing, that the design and materiality of the rooftop addition featuring gray finish metal cladding and standing ceiling metal roofing and black finished windows will be in keeping with the materials and finishes of others, of other rooftop accretions within the historic district, that the rooftop addition will not be visibly visible directly over the primary facade and will only be minimally visible from limited vantage points on West eighty-second street and Amsterdam Avenue from oblique angles and in the context of a taller apartment building. That the proposed modifications to the bay window will not be visible from any public thoroughfare, that the bay window is simply designed and located at the interior corner of a rear extension, therefore the proposed modifications will not detract from the pattern of designed bays in the row. That the design and materiality of the window featuring black painted wood paneling and windows and reconstructed brick corbeling below the bay will be in keeping with the design and material palette of bay windows found at the rear rears of buildings of this type of style and age. And that the proposed work will not detract from the special architectural and historic character of the building or the historic district. I recommend that the applicant continue to work with staff to set back the rooftop addition to an appropriate place in the rear facade to, to make, to better maintain a sense of the building's massing.
Vice Chair Bland, would you second that motion?
Second.
Mark, will you call the vote?
Chair Cal?
Aye.
Commissioner Bland?
Aye.
Commissioner Chapin?
Aye.
Commissioner Chen?
Aye.
Commissioner Chu?
Aye.
Commissioner Ginsburg?
Aye.
Commissioner Jefferson?
Aye.
Commissioner Lutfi?
Aye.
Commissioner Master?
Aye.
Commissioner Horford Smith?
Aye.
With ten in favor and none opposed, the motion passes.
So that's approved. Please continue to work with the staff. Nice to see you. All right, we're going to, Commissioners, I'm going to ask you if we can do one more item. I know it's a long day, but we'll try to get group on bar.
All right, before I do that, I'm just going to read into the record two items that we will not be doing today. First was item five, LPC twenty-four dash zero two two three seven, seventy-seven Bleeker Street, the NoHo Historic District. We will read that into the record to be presented at a future public hearing date, as well as public hearing item number eleven. LPC twenty-one dash zero five five nine six, eleven ninety-seven Clove Road, the John King Vanderbilt House Individual Landmark, also The John King Vanderbilt House Individual Landmark also read into the record to be presented at a future public hearing date. Uh, with that, we'll close on public hearing item number 10, LPC 23-10021. This is an application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Manhattan, Block 1405, Lot 27, 163 East 70th Street, in the Upper East Side Historic District. A Neo-Italian Renaissance-style stable and residence designed by C.P.H. Gilbert and built in 1902. The application is to construct a rooftop addition.
Afternoon Commissioners, Richard Laug, Preservation Staff. Um, I will be presenting the proposal and the applicant, Jason Holmes of Arpa Basca, uh, is here to answer any questions. Now, the proposal is to construct a rooftop addition that is taller than may be approved at staff level. Uh, the building is located at the north side of East 70th Street, between Lexington and Third Avenues. Uh, here are the existing proposed front elevations within the streetscape. Uh, the current solarium is a partial width addition that slopes down west to east. The proposed addition is a full width addition, uh, that will slope down north to south. Uh, here are the existing and proposed floor plans showing the change in footprint. And here is the existing proposed sections saying, uh, the proposed heights at the rear, which is, uh, 15 foot 11 inches and the height at the front, which is 12 foot 11. And here are the existing details of the front's elevations and the rear elevations. Uh, proposed addition will be clad in a dark bronze, uh, finished standing seam metal cladding and with a large window and door assembly at the front and clerestory windows at the rear. And here are photos of the mock-up and visibility photographs. Uh, and the mock-up is shown as, as far enough back from the front facade that, uh, there are no concerns about visibility. And, uh, that's it. Thank you very much. And Jason Holmes is here to answer any questions. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, do we have any questions on this? Okay. And I will note that there is no one in the room to speak on this item, so I'll turn it over to Gregory to see if we have any remote participants.
Thank you Chair Cal. We have one hand raised in the attendees list, that being Nuhan Sari from the Friends of the Upper East Side. Nuhan Sari, I'm promoting you to panelist right now. Please unmute your line and state your name for the record, and you will have three minutes to speak.
Chair Carol, Honorable Commissioners, my name is Nuhan Sari and I'm speaking on behalf of Friends of the Upper East Side Historic District. Even though Friends' Preservation Committee does not believe that either the existing or the proposed penthouse additions are appropriate for this historic stable building, we do not object to the proposal since the new structure, although taller than the existing greenhouse, would not be at all visible from the public way. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony. I am looking through the attendees list right now, and I do not see any further hands raised. So I will note for the record that Manhattan Community Board Seven recommends approval. And I will bring it back to you Chair Cal.
Okay, thank you. So we have, uh, supportive testimony. I don't know if there's anything else you'd like to say before we move to our discussion. Now, okay, and Commissioners, do we have any final questions? So let's, uh, move to, uh, close the hearing. Vice Chair Bland, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
Thank you Commissioner Jefferson, would you second that motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Uh, I'm actually gonna start with you Commissioner Jefferson, since I haven't started all day.
And it's a tough one.
It's a.
Set back some.
You can do anything.
Okay, thank you Commissioner Holford Smith?
I agree, it's appropriate.
Yeah, it's just here because it's minimally visible, right? Yeah, it's, it's fine. Oh, okay. It's invisible, okay.
An 11-foot high addition, that's why.
That's for us. Okay, yes. Okay, so it's, I find it appropriate, thank you.
And it's set back from the front and rear, so it was there. So does everybody agree?
Yes.
Yes.
Chair Jefferson, would you make the motion?
23-10021, 163 East 70th Street, Upper East Side Historic District. Application is to construct a rooftop addition. I note that the building's scale, style, material, and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historical character of the Upper East Side Historic District. I recommend approval, finding that the proposed work will not eliminate or damage any significant historic fabric, that the proposed rooftop addition will not be visible from any public thoroughfare, that the size and scale of the proposed rooftop addition, set back from the front and rear facades, will not overwhelm the building, the building, and will maintain a sense of original massing, that the design of the additional, addition, with your standing seam, sink cladding, slope roof, and, and metal windows, and doors assemblies, will feature a material palette, an utilitarian char, palette, and utilitarian character is consistent with those of rooftop additions found at other buildings of this type within the historic district. And that the proposed work will not detract from the special character of the building or the Upper East Side Historic District.
You want Commissioner Master, would you second that motion?
Second.
Mark, will you call the vote?
Chair Cal?
Aye.
Commissioner Bland?
Aye.
Commissioner Chapin?
Aye.
Commissioner Chen?
Aye.
Commissioner Chu?
Aye.
Commissioner Ginsburg?
Aye.
Commissioner Jefferson?
Aye.
Commissioner Lutfi?
Aye.
Commissioner Master?
Aye.
Commissioner Holford Smith?
Aye.
With ten in favor and none opposed, the motion passed.
That's approved, thank you. And I want to thank you Commissioners for sticking out through a very sticking, sticking with us for a very long day. Uh, appreciate your dedication, commitment, and hard work. And we'll see everybody, not next Tuesday, but in two Tuesdays. And that, uh, concludes our session.